Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February Planning Board meeting. Chairman Carrie is away. I will be presiding, Tom Ferroni, Vice Chair. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could all rise.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to announce that Kathy Dougherty, our alternate, will be sitting in tonight. And regarding the January minutes, we don't have them ready, so that'll be postponed. The approval of them will be postponed to the March meeting. So first on the agenda is the Moody property.
Good afternoon, good evening, Joseph Rina, Principal Site Safety. First, I'd like to thank you for moving me to the front of the agenda. That saved me a lot of, I wish I had another meeting in another town, so. So this evening, representing Jerry and Susan Moody, who are the contract VNDs on a lot at 221 Rescue Drive. The lot was created in 1979 as part of the Habercorn subdivision. It's the, it was a three-lot subdivision. This is the remaining lot. The other two were built out. So they're proposing to build a single-family residence. The lot is less than the required area for the zone, but there is a variance in place for, for the, an area variance in place for that. So we've submitted a pretty comprehensive package of information. I know some of it was late-breaking this week, and we understand that the consultants have not had an opportunity to review it. But basically, we're looking for approval for this lot, a single-family. It's going to be served by a septic system, as far as the stormwater goes. Because of the ground conditions, we haven't been able to do the testing that's necessary. So we did a conceptual design, assuming that we're going to hit reasonable conditions on the site. So at some point in the near future, we hope to be able to get out there with John's office and do some testing out there to demonstrate that we can get the stormwater in there. We are disturbing about 6,500 square feet of steep slope. And again, we're, we've created a map showing the trees that are coming down. We have a tree removal plan that indicates the trees that are coming out as part of the project. And from what I, I'm sorry, from what I think I heard, and Bruce, you can correct me, that, you know, we have this, the March 31st deadlines coming up as far as cutting trees because of potential bat habitat, but if we keep it to 5,000 square feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just need some clarity on that, but.
Yeah, unless Joe, the steep slopes there are greater than 15%, it would give the number of traction on 2,000 square feet. So I know you have some steep slopes, so maybe you can avoid them?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not possible. I mean, we're, we're on that 15% slope, yeah.
I'd love to think that is.
Okay. Because if that's the case, and we can, if we can keep it at 5,000, we could at least get the house and driveway footprint taken care of, and they can get to work on just that part and put the septic off for another day. That's all I have.
This is our first review of this application. We did have a conversation with the applicant.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
I'm sorry, let me tell you who I am. Bruce Barber, Town Environmental Planning Consultant. My apologies. Forgot there. So we had a Zoom meeting, and we had a heads-up on the project. We did some preliminary research, and Joe submitted some materials to us. At present, there are some additional materials required. I won't go into all of the great details. There is a site inspection that John and I both want to accomplish. We're limited because of the snow cover. One of the reasons, in addition to the soils and looking at the stormwater potential out there, is that we want to see if there's any wetlands. It probably does not, but there are some wetlands that show up on the DEC maps at the very back or off the very back of the property. We want to make sure the buffer isn't reflected onto the property at all, so that's the other reason to go out and have a quick look. We're going to get out there as soon as we can, and as soon as the weather permits us to do so. Other than that, Joe had come up with a conceptual plan for the stormwater based upon some presumptions made of the soils. Basically, the septic testing was done in certain soils to ascertain if a septic was viable. The same soils are going to be utilized, at least on environmental mapping, for the stormwater. And so we're making the presumption that the percolation, the deeps, will be similar, and that's where the conceptual plan is coming from, to be validated at a later date. Other than that, there's just a lot of teeths across in terms of, you know, some site plan issues, driveway profiles, things like that. As far as the trees go, this is a real situation with a lot of folks in that, you know, the March 31st deadline is approaching, and U.S. Fish and Wildlife has a bat recovery zone over the entire county of Putnam. There are very few variances that are required, and quite frankly, the variances take long to obtain, and it does to wait out the timeframe. I think what we need to do is take a look at this particular application in terms of how we can try to get this shoehorned in without disturbing the steep slopes, keeping within the town code, and getting these trees down, because if not, they won't be able to proceed on this until November 1st.
Right.
The other thing, though, to be careful about is that as a contract VND, we do not want to warrant any tree cutting on a property that this gentleman does not presently own. So he's going to have to get authority from the property owner currently to cut these trees and do it as necessary out there. So for now, that's all we have. Is there any questions?
I'm just curious, what would it take to allow them to get the trees cut so they can get?
I think what we're going to need to do is work with Joe to really fine-tune the limit of disturbance, and see how we can work through this and get, get the trees down that they need to get the access to the property and the house footprint, perhaps septic footprint, and see what we can do to try to work it.
Okay. Gentlemen, you have anything else to add?
Okay, thank you. Did you get this?
Was this the new one?
Yeah.
Like, when new?
Last one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we responded to this.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, great.
Did you get mine as well, Joe?
No, I did not. Come in, come your office.
I'll make sure we're not sent to be there.
Okay.
John, do you have anything to add regarding this application?
No, as Bruce said, this was our first submittal.
Right.
Much of that is missing, and we broke in, and we're going to use whip, and there's, there's things that weren't in the submittal that I got. So, and there is a comment in that moment, and I think most of them are relatively straightforward, and easy to work through.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thanks again for moving me up. Thank you.
You got it. Have a good evening.
Paul Lynch from Putnam Engineering, here to represent the applicants. We are here for a public hearing. The site, as you are all aware, has been disturbed. The house has been renovated. There's a tentative driveway that's been cut in place. We've gone through the process of answering the town's consultant's memos and providing additional information. We actually have a complete submission, which will be going in tomorrow for the March meeting, but we're obviously out for a public hearing tonight. We've been able to get the driveway down to a maximum of an 11% slope in the middle section. So we've prepared a separate letter for a waiver in that regard. I think John could address that. We had briefly gone back and forth through email, thinking that leaving the driveway in its current location was probably the best thing to do, otherwise you're introducing retaining walls and additional disturbance and so on and so forth.
Good evening. For the record, my name is John Andrews. I'm the engineer to the planning board. To echo what Mr. Lynch said, there is an open comment memo from me dated December 10th of 2024 that needs to be addressed. The project, however, has reached a point where a public hearing is in order. And our recommendation to you would be, you need to be able to open the public hearing, receive public comment, and then our recommendation would be to adjourn the public hearing to March meeting, directing the applicant to provide us with responses to our comments in time for that March meeting. And presuming everything goes well and no substantive comments, we might have a further recommendation at that point in time. And then, as Mr. Lynch indicated, he kind of made a late submittal, and as part of that submittal was a request for a driveway waiver. And Mr. Lynch did do his homework. He kind of gave me a couple options. And quite honestly, one of the options resulted in way more land disturbance, because we needed a four-foot retaining wall, and there's already some issues out there with drainage that we didn't want to mess with. Moving it the other way, kind of put it in close proximity to the catch basin and made the, made the maneuvering into the driveway somewhat awkward. So our recommendation with Mr. Lynch was to stay with what he had proposed and seek a waiver. It's a relatively short driveway, and the waiver is really for a small section in the middle that's somewhat immaterial. But the key thing now would be to open the public hearing and see if there's any public comments.
Okay, thank you, John. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any comments from the public regarding this application? Going once, going twice? Okay, I'll make a motion. We adjourn the public hearing till March.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The last thing was please direct Vera to send Mr. Lynch's written request for driveway waiver to both the Highway Superintendent and the applicable Fire District for their comments.
We have to vote on that?
A simple, simple yea or nay vote.
Right, right. So I make a motion. We direct the applicant to address all open issues and submit to Vera. Did I get that right?
Yeah, the letter Vera already has, so she just needs to be directed and circulated to the Fire District and I make.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next up, RuPauli, Smalley Corner, Smalley's Corner Road.
Paul Lynch, Putnam Engineering.
We know you.
And this is a continuation from last month. We did respond and submit some additional information that had been requested. We had gotten Putnam County Health Department approval, and I forwarded that information. I'm actually going to be dropping off physical copies of the actual plans either tomorrow or beginning of next week. But all in all, that was another one where we had a section where the driveway exceeds a 10%. We asked for a waiver on that, and that was so that the applicant would not be in a position where he had to hammer or, in essence, blast. So we got our gray to be pretty close to existing. There will be some areas where he's going to have to hammer to a certain extent. Not much, but it is going to have to happen. We did introduce a second retaining wall to cut down on the wall lengths as you were to go up the driveway. And you'll have two walls that are a maximum height of four feet. It's pretty much straightforward. You know, everything else is pretty much remained the same.
Okay, thank you.
So this is, this is pretty much a repeat of the previous one. We do have two comment memos, one from Mr. Barber and one from myself. Mr. Barber is dated January 9th. Mine is dated December 10th. They both need to be addressed. We would recommend, since the public hearing was adjourned last month, in contemplation of getting some additional information, we would recommend that you open the public hearing, see if there's any further public comment, and then adjourn the public hearing again to March. Upon doing so, then you would direct the applicant to make the submittal that addresses our concerns, and as with the previous one, just direct Vera to send his written request for driveway waiver. And we concur with Mr. Lynch's analysis. It's either hammer more or cut closer to the other property, and in this case, they're already got a pretty well-developed landscaping plan to buffer from the neighbor, so I think he's done as much as he can for the driveway.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to open a public hearing for this application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, any comments from the public here regarding this application? Okay, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the public hearing to next month's meeting. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And I'll make a motion. We direct Vera to issue the letter to the Highway Department and the Fire Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Paul.
So this is an application the board has seen a couple of times now. It's to reconstruct an existing single-family residence on a new foundation, realign an existing driveway, and repair to the existing subsurface sewage disposal system. Property is on the southerly side of Forest Cart. There's a 1.25 acre parcel in the R-80 zoning district. Basically, this has gone through and has several iterations. If you recall, the applicant originally wanted to have a two-and-a-half-story building. They would have needed zoning variances in terms of height requirements, et cetera. The plans were modified to remove that second story to be more compliant with zoning and not necessitate the zoning variances that were originally discussed. This is a Type 2 action under SEACUR. The only thing really that's still pending, quite frankly, is some of the details on the wetland buffer mitigation plan. The applicant is installing a, or intends to install, a Fuji Clean type system to address the septic system repair. As the board is aware, that is a unit that can potentially reduce phosphorus floating to the lake, and in my opinion, could and should serve as substantial wetland buffer mitigation due to the increased cost from above a traditional septic system. But there's still a few details we need to iron out with the applicant in terms of the mitigation as well. Other than that, there's some simple odds and ends to discuss. John has a similar memo of odds and ends, but we do recommend that this be scheduled for a public hearing for the March meeting. John?
Oh, public hearing right now, that's right. So, if I may, just to piggyback on what Mr. Barber said, most of our comments have been satisfactorily resolved. Certain comments that we had may be impacted by what Bruce finally works out in terms of his details, but providing there's no substantive comments during the course of the public hearing, and we get some answers for next meeting, you would be in a position, perhaps, to move this to an administrative tract next month, if everything goes according to plan.
Okay.
So our recommendation this evening would be to open the public hearing, receive public comment. If there's no substantive public comment, unlike the others, you could probably close this public hearing. And move it along.
Can I just ask Bruce a question? If this is going to be the Fuji system, is this going to be the requirements like the other one that they put on Gray Oaks, like testing it periodically?
Not necessarily, Kathy. That was a kind of a prototype that we were looking to see the how effective it would be, and that's being measured over the last, since that was installed. This basically would have the standard maintenance requirements. As you recall, Fuji Clean systems or these types of systems have more rigorous maintenance and inspection requirements that would be detailed on the site plan to ensure that those requirements are met by the owner and future owners as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So I make a motion. We open the public hearing regarding this application.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any comments from the public here regarding this application?
That's fine.
Okay. I make a motion. We close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we can move this to the administrative tract.
I would wait till the end of your final submittal next month, because we do have to just verify the bond and everything.
Okay.
Put it on for next month, and if Bruce is satisfied by next month, you can put it on administrative tract next month.
All right, next up is Morrow Equipment.
Good evening. I'm John Watson from Insight Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture, here with George Allison Drados from Keenan Bean Law Firm. We're here for a continued site plan review on the Morrow Equipment project. At the last meeting, we got through, I think, most of the technical issues, closed the public hearing, so really here to just loose up, tie up some loose ends and hopefully get a resolution.
I have just a small piece of this, which has to do with the planning and the signs. The applicant did submit some prototypes of the signs. I received it, actually, this past Friday. Had an opportunity to look at and also confer with the building inspector regarding the zoning requirements of the signs. There were two signs, one's a freestanding sign near the driveway entrance to the property, the other one is actually on the building itself. A review of both signs indicates that they do meet zoning code requirements, and there's no additional action to be taken by this board. I would recommend, however, that the board require the applicant to include the signs on the final drawings, so that they're memorialized in the drawings, and just kind of received the cut sheets on them to review this past Friday.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay.
For some reason, I get the big lucky one.
Because you're good at it.
We were, we were directed at last meeting to prepare a draft resolution of approval with conditions for the site plan and the steep slopes and erosion control permit for this project, Morrow Equipment Company, LLC. You should have in front of you draft number three. Hopefully, you all got it last week and had some time to review it. I kind of went through it again today, and I will point out, there is one typo that needs to be corrected on page four of seven under number eight. It basically says, "Stormwater discharges from construction activity GP-0-52." It should read 25. I have fat fingers and do not type.
It should be GT-0?
Other than that, basically, this resolution, you have a series of whereas clauses which identify the project and provide you with the project history. I won't bore you. You all know what it is. Those further go on, that you did on November 14th of 2024, adopt a negative declaration in this matter. Following that, the Zoning Board of Appeals issued a formal determination and granted two variances that were necessary for the project. The formal determination was that the crane does not meet the definition of a building, and that the crane is not subject to the height restrictions as set forth in the town code, allowing the project to proceed with a crane height of 99 feet. Variance number one was for outdoor storage of up to 32 feet in height, where 10 feet is the maximum permitted by code. You remember, the various sections get stacked, and the ideal stacking height is 32 feet. And then the last is because of the way this site is configured, was for light poles to be 35 feet in height, where maximum is 20 is permitted by your code. So the poles around the back are all 35. This board also granted a waiver concerning showing individual trees. And I'll go through quickly the now-for-be it resolved. The now-there-for-be it resolved that pursuant to the Town of Kent Code, Chapter 66, Article 3, the planning board hereby grants steep slope and erosion control permit approval with conditions. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants final approval with conditions to the proposed site plan and steep slope erosion control plan approvals, as depicted on the following reports, plans, and maps. That's a listing of the most current in our files we've seen from Insight. Those are likely to be modified. They also include the architectural renderings, so that you know what the building is going to look like. And then be it further resolved that the steep, site plan and steep slope and erosion control plan approvals are expressly conditioned on the completion of and compliance with the following. And these are all conditions. They are fairly standard for you. They are also based on a lot of the representations made by the project sponsor and their engineers during the project. Yes, we know, we're going to get that. Yes, we know, we're going to get that. So basically, I'm not going to go through them in any specific detail, but I think all the conditions are there. We agreed, there are bond numbers in there. There are two bonds required for this one project, an erosion and sediment control bond in the amount of $17,320, and then a stormwater management facility bond in the amount of $72,460, which would, at the conclusion of construction and after certification, the long-term maintenance amount, that would be reduced to a long-term maintenance amount of $15,000. There are various agreements and legal issues that need to be addressed. One of the ones that the board asked us to make sure was in here is a forthcoming sidewalk easement. Remember, you wanted the ability to put a sidewalk along the road frontage. We realize it's not the best road frontage, but you want that ability as much as you do along other projects, so we're going to need to see some updated plans and drawings. There were some representations, no blasting, a rock hammering, no certificate of occupancy for the structures can be issued until a highway work permit for the project, when issue has been closed out and DOT is satisfied with the improvements in Route 52. And then the rest of them are just maintaining the site and arranging for inspections and payment of fees and charges. Unless the applicant has any major issues, we would offer this for your consideration. You would need a motion, a second, and then a roll call vote.
So I make a motion that we approve draft three of the Town of Kent Planning Board Resolution of Approval with Conditions for Site Plan and Steep Slope and Erosion Control for Morrow Equipment LLC, with the correction on page four of seven, paragraph eight, that GP-0-0-52-001 be corrected to GP-0-25-001.
I'll make the, I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, vote. That was Hugo that seconded.
Chairman is absent.
Correct. Thomas Ferroni votes aye.
Jackie Fushar is absent.
Hugo?
Hugo German.
Aye.
Giancarlo Cattucci is absent. Richard Morey.
Aye.
Jean Monet.
Aye.
Kathy Dougherty as acting member.
Aye.
The motion carries. It's approved.
Yay!
All right, next on the agenda, Zacon or Zacon? We'd appreciate a correction there.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Rick Bolander, civil engineer on the Zacon project. I'm here with Joe Zacon, the owner of the property. Just a quick history of the property. It used to be two lots. The... The division line was about here. The county took it over and a tax foreclosure, merged the lots, put it up for auction. Joe auctioned on it, got it. So, we're here today now presenting a single-family home, three-bedroom, with an associated detached garage with an apartment over on top of that garage. We positioned the house as best we could to limit the amount of environmental impacts. Obviously, what you're seeing in gray here are slopes over 15%. So, we tried to limit disturbance of those slopes as best we could. We maintained the existing curb cut. We essentially maintained, I don't know how clear it is, I tried to put color on it to clarify. But in pink here is the existing driveway. So, we tried to mimic that existing driveway while keeping the driveway under 10% and essentially limiting as best we could the impact to the surrounding neighbors and kind of tucking it away. We didn't want to keep it too close to Luddingtonville Road. We're proposing only two trees to be removed. There may be a couple more depending on the grading, but we're going to try and refine that as best we could. We have been working with the health department. We did the soros testing, we've submitted to the health department for the septic. And while we were out there, we did preliminary stormwater testing, good perk results. So, we're proposing two systems, one adjacent to the house and then another adjacent to the garage. And that's where we are, and that's what we're proposing.
Okay, thank you. Bruce or John want to comment?
Okay, so this is our first review on this particular project. As indicated earlier, the applicant wishes to construct a three-bedroom, 2,125 square foot detached residence with a separate detached garage and an apartment on the second floor of the detached garage. Associated with the application is a deck, a well and septic system, and a driveway. The property is located on the northerly side of Luddingtonville Road, and it's 2.56 acres in size, located in already zoning district. Basically, the applicant is in need of an erosion sediment control from this board, wetland permit to be determined, and a special use permit also be determined as well. The reason about the special use permit has to do with the garage apartment. Presently in our town code, you cannot have a detached apartment associated with a single-family residential zone parcel, of which this is an already zoning parcel. So, there are circumstances, however, where the Zoning Board of Appeals, which would be the actual agency to grant this special use permit, has in the past, under certain circumstances, granted apartments for family members, other relatives, things like that, in these special circumstances. But we can't make any warranties or assertions they would do so in the future. So, at present, what this board needs to know is that our code does not permit separate, two separate, single-family dwellings on a single parcel, which would be the case with this applicant. The site plan that I reviewed showed a shared septic system. Apparently, you reckon that's going to be changed, and they're going to have two separate systems if appropriate?
We were going to pump up from the apartment up to the, so one system.
Okay, so again, that's something that, and John could speak to this better than I, but I haven't seen the health department really grant that type of situation. So, I think we also have some site plan issues to go. John and I have to do a site inspection, some odds and ends in terms of just general, you know, details for the site plan, et cetera. So, I think at this time, we can recommend the board really not take any action, give the applicant an opportunity to reply to our comment memos, see what we have here with these separate two dwelling units, and move forward from there for the March meeting. Hopefully, we'll get a chance to get out and look at the site and be able to report back to you as a site inspection as well.
I'm not going to bore you. My comments are substantially the same as Bruce's. There's a long way to go, there's a lot of moving pieces, and there's going to be, there's a need for some additional information and work on the site plan to comply with the town standards. So, as Bruce said, there's no action to be taken, and we need to resolve the apartment and the health department issues.
Okay, thank you, John. Any other comments?
Just about the apartment, so that would be zoning, that would handle that, the special permit. Would we need, is that a variance that we would seek? Special use permit, and that's granted from the zoning? Got it. So, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't go in front of them until we...
Yeah. I'd like to look at getting before them, and really what happens is that the board, at your request, will hold in advance our reviews till you're back to the zoning board. That way, we would not be spending your money unnecessarily until we turn back to zoning. So, that would be your request to the Planning Board to hold our reviews in advance till you're back to the zoning board request that you push.
That's it, yes, that'd be perfect.
If you want that apartment, that's your next step.
Yes.
Because if they're not going to look favorably on it.
Let us know right...
It takes a different approach to our comments.
Absolutely.
And as Bruce said, we don't want to waste your money.
Appreciate that.
Basic comments, you know, there's enough there, even if you walk away from the apartment, you don't understand what you need to do.
Exactly.
So, our advice to you would be to go to ZBAs.
Perfect.
And I think, wouldn't we want some health department input as well about pumping up?
Yeah, if he's already been talking to the health department.
Oh, okay.
We'll need some clarification on what they're considering.
Sure.
Yeah, I think Tom, that would have a lot to do with this apartment and where the septic system goes, and how big and how large and where it's going to be.
Yep.
Okay.
Your all hinges on the apartment, sir.
Right. Okay.
All right, so we have a plan. So, we'll go in front of the zoning board and kind of take care of that.
Right.
Good. Appreciate, thank you, guys.
All right, guys, thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, next on the agenda, Beresford?
Good evening. Jason Snyder with Beadie and Watson, representing the applicant, David Beresford. Mr. Beresford wishes to construct a two-bedroom, single-family home on a vacant lot on Kent Lake Ave. We have, since the last meeting here, we've been to the zoning board. We've gathered the required variances from the zoning board for area, frontage, and lot width. We've submitted the Board of Health approvals. We've updated the survey, we've had the survey updated. We've added some items outlined in Chapter 66 for conformance with Chapter 66 of the town code, have been added to the plan, we've provided a bond estimate, maybe that's a little, a draft at least, so... Other than that, I mean, I believe we've addressed all the comments that have been presented thus far, so...
To echo what Jason has indicated, from an engineering standpoint, the majority of our comments have been resolved. Bruce still has some outstanding issues, and because Bruce has outstanding issues, some of that may affect the elements of design. He is correct, they did submit a bond estimate, we reworked the bond estimate. If and when it reaches that point, we recommend a bond amount of about $10,000. And this will need a public hearing? Well, you need to decide whether this requires a public hearing or not. I am confident it's where it may need to be, but I think Bruce may have some different opinions as to whether you schedule a public hearing for next month or not.
Okay, thank you, John.
Very briefly, as Jason indicated, this is an application for a two-bedroom house construction with a deck, well, and septic system driveway. Property is located on the easterly side of Kent Lake Drive on 0.673 acres in an already zoning district. As Jason indicated, the applicant received variances for a lot size, frontage, and minimum lot width for the subject property down December 16th from the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is a type-two action under C-Curb. There are a lot of things that Jason has addressed already in my prior memo, but one of the things that is coming up for me is that this is right on the lake. What we'd like to see is the amount of wetland buffer that is going to be impacted by the proposed action, and also some type of functional statement in terms of what that buffer does to drive some mitigation. I know that there's a DEP permit, there's some stormwater management involved, but what we're really talking about is with the lakes in Kent and just this area in general, is demonstrating that we're not increasing the polluting load post-construction from pre-construction levels, most specifically phosphorus loading into the lakes, which is a pollutant concern. So, what I'd like to do is work with Jason to see how we might be able to develop a mitigation plan to ensure to the board that we are not increasing the pollutant loading post-construction, especially phosphorus. That's something that is usually easily done using something called the simple method in stormwater management, which quantifies phosphorus loading and other pollutants at a design point. I mean, I think it's something that's relatively easy to address. So, I'd like to suggest to this board, if Jason, you can and feel comfortable getting that together and working with me between now and the due date, which is a week from tonight. Can you swing it?
Yeah, I have to.
No, I don't want to put you out.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I want to get this, I want to get this.
So, let's say this, that we can schedule the public hearing for the March meeting, provided that the applicant provides some materials in a timely fashion, and we can move forward from that. Okay? Any questions?
That requires, Mr. Chairman, a simple oral resolution to schedule a public hearing for the March meeting.
It does.
And motion, second, and you don't need to vote.
For the March meeting.
I make a motion, we schedule a public hearing for the March meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now below the line, I believe.
Do we feel any compelling need to be... Is it all below the line?
You already did it before the meeting.
Well, Mr. Greenberg is here.
Well, the, do we need it on record?
Yes.
Okay. There you go. We can, let's breeze through it.
Oh, I see just... Yes, because we did it at the workshop, I got it.
Yep, sure. This, regarding Ryder property, correct?
Zach?
Ryder?
Well, without Cohen personally.
Okay, great. Okay, this will be regarding Cohen.
As you recall, this board sent us to the zoning board, and they granted all the variances that were requested.
Just introduce yourself for the record.
I'm sorry, Joel Greenberg, I'm the architect for Mr. and Mrs. Cohen.
Thank you, Joe.
Basically, you sent us to the zoning board. There was a whole series of variances that were required, and all the variances were granted. We also got approval from the county planning board under the Section 239m, so that was taken care of. So, basically, we'd like to set a public hearing so we can move the project along.
Okay.
Mr. Greenberg is nothing but an optimist, and I appreciate that immensely. I have not received a submittal. Mr. Walters has provided, both Bruce and I, with copies of the ZBA, but other than that, we don't have a map, we don't have a plat, we don't have anything to evaluate. So, unless and until we get that, there's nothing we can do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I beg to differ, I mean, I submitted everything on time.
Mr. Greenberg, you can walk to my office.
I'm not saying that you didn't, but I know I submitted everything to the office.
Maybe tomorrow or the next day or Monday, you could just resubmit everything to Bureau and CC, John and I, or PDFs.
Sure, can do that.
That would be everything you've got.
You can have it all.
And I mean everything you've got. Okay?
Well, can I leave some left for the next client?
No.
So, can we have the public hearing in March?
You can have a public hearing until we have the plat and the pluses and requirements.
Oh, okay, okay, but it was submitted, okay, no problem.
Maybe you submitted it to the ZBA, and you thought you had it all in.
What's that?
Maybe you put it all to the ZBA, and you thought you had put it into the planning.
I will check, but I'm almost, I remember bringing it here to the office. Okay, then as far as Mr. Ryder is concerned, same situation. There was a series of variances that were required, and they were all granted by the zoning board, and based on the decision from the zoning board, there were no conditions. So, it's basically, it was approved as submitted.
Right, and we're still waiting for certain updates, right?
Yes, specifically from Mr. Schilling with respect to requested waivers, and also an update of the septic and reflective of the grant.
Right.
Okay, I will take care of that ASAP then. Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And, oh, Happy Valentine's Day.
I'll quickly go through the items. Brian Finney is scheduled for next month. Homeland Towers, Laurel Mountain, I think the end of the month for their balloon test.
Yes.
And that's proceeding. Cohen, we just discussed, Ryder, we just discussed, Lakeside Conference Center, we're waiting for information from them. Chung Yang, Bill did issue the TCO. They have to finish the project, and one of the requirements of moving from TCO to CO is they must meet the MS4 stormwater sign-off requirements. So, that kind of covers our bases. Holly, that's a work in progress. Route 52 is a work in progress. Metric Motors is a work in no progress. Nichols Road is a work in progress. Torres is a limbo project. And TJ Contracting, we're waiting for information from him.
Okay. Thank you, John. Any new items out there?
Nothing.
So, I make a motion, we close the meeting.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.